I call this meeting to order. I am Lucinda Babers, the Vice Chair of the Metro Board of Directors and the District's Deputy Mayor for Operations and Infrastructure. With me tonight is Jennifer Ellison, Metro's Corporate Secretary, and Stephen Segarlin, the Director for Metro's Office of Real Estate and Development, who will be giving tonight's presentation. I'd like to also recognize we're joined this evening by the City of Tacoma Park Councilmember Jason Small. Welcome, Councilmember Small. This hearing is convened by the Metro Board of Directors to gather public comments on a proposed changes to the Tacoma Metro Station located in Washington DC. This is our agenda this evening. We will begin with some background information, then move to describing the proposed project, followed by an overview of the protocol for commenting. We will then hear public comments and discuss. The general plans and environmental evaluation for the project are available online at these links in the presentation. Two copies are also available in the hallway at the registration table. Notice of this hearing was made public by publishing in The Washington Post, an ad placed in El Tiempo Latino, Washington Hispanic, and El Trif. The hearing notice was also sent to local governments and other organizations within the compact zone, as well as posted at wamada.com. There are three ways to provide comments at this hearing. In person, via Zoom, or over the. With us in person, it would like to provide testimony, the staff at the registration table, if you have not already put your name on the list of speakers. For those of you who have pre-registered and joined the Zoom, we ask that you remain muted with your camera off until you're called on to speak. And those of you participating via telephone, if you would like to provide testimony, please press star three. This will put you in the speaker's queue. Elected public officials will be allowed five minutes and everyone else will be allowed three minutes each. Extra time will be given for translation if it's needed. If you have copies of your testimony to distribute, please hand them to the staff at the registration table. I'd also like to note tonight's hearing is being broadcast live via YouTube on the Metro4 YouTube channel, and it will be archived there after the hearing concludes. I will now call Mr. Segarlin for the staff presentation. Stephen?
Thank you, Vice Chair Babers. The purpose of the hearing is to obtain public input on the following changes to the facilities at the Tacoma Metro Station. Relocation of the bus loop and kiss and ride, addition of one alighting bus stop, removal of 144 kiss and ride spaces, and the addition of a traffic signal on Carroll Street Northwest at the Wamata Bus Loop and Kiss and Ride entrance. Before discussing the changes further, let me give some context or background about how we got to this meeting today. As many of you may know, the Tacoma Metro Station opened in 1978 and had around 5,000 to 6,000 riders per average weekday in the year leading up to the COVID-19 pandemic, and has recovered to around 2,500 riders per average weekday over the past few months. Since the station's opening, there have been no substantial changes to the transit facilities, but there have long been discussions about opportunities for transit-oriented development. That led Metro to engage a joint development partner, EYA, in 2005 to prepare and execute a plan to include housing at the station and any needed reconfiguration or resizing of the transit facilities, which currently include nine bus bays and 160 kiss and ride spaces. Subsequently, Metro held a compact public hearing in 2007 to consolidate parking facilities in support of an initial plan that largely consisted of townhouses, but that effort was delayed by the financial market crash in 2008. A few years later, after the economic recovery, a new development plan was proposed that increased the housing potential, and a second compact public hearing was held in 2014 to reduce the parking capacity and consolidate the parking spaces in Duro Garage. After the compact public hearing approval, the project did not proceed while addressing questions about the District of Columbia's comprehensive plan and community feedback. Then in 2021, the District of Columbia adopted an update to the comprehensive plan that clarified and increased the housing development potential of the site to support the district's housing and transit-oriented development goals. Through the consultation process for the district's comprehensive plan and community engagement led by the development team over the past few years, a new site plan has been proposed integrating that feedback, but requires further reconfiguration of both the parking and bus facilities. Regarding the changes to the transit facilities, if we jump to the next slide, thank you. We'll cover aspects of capacity as well as access and site configuration. For the bus facility, the project proposes an increase in capacity from nine to 10 bays with the additional location supporting bus alighting or customers departing buses, which will improve the operations of the bus loop and reduce congestion resulting from the high volume of bus services at the station. For the kiss and ride facilities, the project proposes a reduction in capacity from 160 to 116 kiss and ride spaces. 16 kiss and ride spaces. This capacity aligns with pickup, drop-off parking demand patterns and includes some additional capacity to accommodate future growth in households in the station's park shed that may result in increased pickup and drop-off demand. The supporting data and analysis is included in the environmental evaluation report posted on Metro's website. In this evaluation, another subset of customers was identified at Tacoma Metro Station that are parking for extended period of times, with more than 82% of users exceeding two hours to more than 12 hours in parking duration. With the proposed reduction in kiss and ride capacity, those customers seeking daily parking options will be directed to use the Fort Totten Parking Ride, which is the next station along the red line. Regarding access and configuration, the bus loop is proposed to be relocated closer to the metro station, but entrances will be retained at Carroll Street and Eastern Ave. As for the kiss and ride, it will be reconstructed between the bus loop and development with access from Carroll Street instead of Eastern Avenue. However, the egress or exit of the kiss and ride will still be onto Eastern Ave as it is today. Next slide. Finally, as part of the compact public hearing, staff has prepared an environmental evaluation for the project to assess any permanent or temporary impacts and to identify opportunities to minimize or mitigate them. This analysis identifies whether there are impacts to transportation, stormwater, air quality, and noise as a result of the changes to the transit facilities. This analysis does not evaluate the impacts related to the private development, which are subject to review and approval by the District of Columbia's entitlements and approvals process. Regarding transportation, there should be no permanent impacts given the parking capacity and trip potentials being reduced. However, there are also some improvements given that, uh, given the improvements to the bus facility and safer pedestrian and bicycle access being provided on site. During the reconstruction of the transit facilities and road network, an interim operations plan, sometimes called a maintenance of traffic plan, will be established to ensure access for all travel modes to the Tacoma Metro Station is always provided throughout the project. Then regarding air quality, noise, and stormwater, there are also no permanent impacts anticipated as a result of the transit facility changes. However, there may be some minor temporary impacts during the reconstruction of the transit facilities, like dust, equipment noise, or sediment and erosion. These will be mitigated following typical construction mitigation techniques and following the District of Columbia's requirements for construction operations. This concludes my presentation on the project. I'll turn the floor back over to Vice Chair Babers to go over the procedures for tonight's hearing.
Thank you, Stephen. We will now take brief calls in the hearing. Welcome back. I'd like to also recognize the park mayor, Sir, and Tacoma Park Councilmember, both. Thank you both for attending. I would like to look at the procedures we will follow during the next minute's comment hearing. We will be alternating between the three ways we alternate today in this hearing. In person, via Zoom, and over the phone. For those of you here in person, you can start making a podium once your name is called. However, if you need a microphone brought to. Please wave your hand when your name is called, so we can see you and we will bring a microphone to you. For those of you who have pre-registered and joined. We ask that you remain muted with your camera off until you're called on to speak. Once you've given your testimony, you can go on and watch the hearing on YouTube. And those of you participating via telephone. You, when it's your turn to speak, we'll announce your. And you'll receive an automated message. Time for you to turn on your, um, mic. And go ahead and speak. Elected public officials, once again, we. About five minutes and everyone else will be about three minutes each. Extra time will be given for translation if. We have a timer that will count down how much time we. It will give you a warning beep when you have 20. And it will beep continuously when your time is up. The timer is important because we have a lot of. Speak this evening. Therefore, we request that you stay within your allotted. We can hear from everyone who wants to provide testimony. In addition to the opportunity to speak at this. Um, I understand I'm cutting in and off.
Thank you. In addition to the opportunity to speak at this evening's hearing, Metro also welcomes written comments on the proposed changes. Further written testimony may be submitted and must be received by 5:00 PM, January 27th, 2023. Testimony can be submitted online at wamada.com/plansandprojects. Online, you can enter free-form testimony or upload letters or other documents. You can also mail testimony to Office of the Secretary, S E C T two E, Wamata, Post Office Box 44390, Washington DC, Please reference Tacoma Public Hearing in the subject line. This testimony must be received, not postmarked, by January 27th, 2023 in order to be included in the hearing record. Your comments will become part of the public record that will be reviewed by the Metro Board of Directors. Changes to the project presented here tonight may be proposed in response to testimony received and subsequent staff analysis. I will note that this public hearing process is unable to address any comments outside the scope of this docket. Those include comments on size, mix, or design of buildings, or future joint development projects, land use matters, service complaints, and fares. Please note that profanity will not be tolerated during this public meeting. I would also ask that you mute yourself and turn your camera off when you're not speaking, and for those providing testimony that may be watching the hearing on another device, please make sure your device is muted when you're giving testimony to avoid feedback. I want to take a moment to recognize that this is where we listen to you. This is your opportunity to comment on the proposal, and we are here to listen. So we won't be taking questions during your testimony. Oh, sorry, we won't be able to answer questions during your testimony. Before you begin your remarks, please state your name and the organization you represent, if any. Please note that all statements, including personal information such as name, email address, address, or telephone number you provide in the statement are releasable to the public upon request and may be posted on Metro's website without change, including any personal information provided. Next steps. The public comment period will close on January 27th, 2023. Staff anticipates releasing the draft staff report to the Metro website in the spring. Once the staff report is released to the public, those of you who provided comments will have the opportunity to review the report to ensure we captured your comments accurately. That review and comment period will close two weeks after the draft staff report is posted. Staff anticipates that the final staff report and supplement will be submitted to the Board of Directors for acceptance in the summer. Now that we have all the background out of the way, it's time to call the first witness. We'll begin with those on Zoom, if any, which we don't have any tonight, and then we'll go through those joining us in person and via phone until everyone who wants to provide testimony has had that opportunity. Our first speaker is Ward Six Councilmember, City of Tacoma Park, Jason Small. Our first speaker is Ward Six Councilmember, City of Tacoma Park, Jason Small.
Do I push anything or does it start? The timer. Oh, good. All right. Um, my name is Jason Small. I am the representative from Ward Six to the Tacoma Park City Council, and I am happy to be providing my first official testimony as a member of that body, um, to this hearing. Uh, I would like to say, uh, to begin with, that I'm a longtime advocate for both fair and affordable housing. Um, I know the buzzwords of affirmatively furthering fair housing and all of the other things that could possibly, um, signal to someone that that is the case. Um, I began working on these things probably right around the time that Womata began thinking about transit-oriented development. And, um, I also have professional experience working with Womata on their transit-oriented development plan, um, in the primarily in the Phase Two, uh, rollout, uh, which included some places along the orange and blue lines in Maryland. Um, I'd just like to say that as a representative of a ward that has largely been transportation locked, um, since the beginning of the metro, that it is my burden to say that there is some degree of concern among the constituents that I serve, that the number of parking spaces that have been, uh, kept for long-term parking may be too small. Um, there are some concerns about whether or not the study was done during a COVID or pandemic peak and whether or not that might have affected the overall analysis of, uh, available parking. Um, and there were some other concerns that I feel that it would be obvious to raise with regard to the issue. Um, if you live where we live, then you are aware that, uh, it is a traffic and/or commuting difficulty to go anywhere during the appropriate times of any rush hour. Um, the buses as currently, um, running in the area are not quite as reliable as they possibly could or should be. Um, and so it makes for a stressful commute generally. Um, adding to that pressure by having people go to Fort Totten, um, is perhaps for some people not as significant an issue, but for the people who live in Ward Six, it would add approximately fifteen minutes to your daily commute. Um, and if the purpose of commuting and being on Metro is to avoid the stress associated with commuting, um, it is a decent enough concern of my constituents that I felt it appropriate to raise here. Um, in addition to that, um, unpleasantly, I have been asked to express some degree of concern about the overall safety and efficacy of parking at Fort Totten. The, um, if you are a regular user of that place, then you know that there are often at least a perception of really interesting, uh, public safety issues. Uh, and so it is one of those things that additionally gives people in the ward concern. I think the last thing I would like to say about that is that, um, those things being said, the people that I spoke to in advance of coming here are unreservedly in favor of transit-oriented development, and they are unreservedly in favor of Womata and the private developer developing their land in the District of Columbia. Um, we are well aware of the need for affordable housing all over, and we are well aware of the prospects for density and increasing opportunity as opposed to disquiet among immediately adjacent neighborhoods. The manner in which we were, uh, asked, I was asked to present today was directly related to attaching the, uh, parking issues to larger issues of design or concern about density. I do not share those concerns. I do share the concerns of the residents of Ward Six concerning the number of available long-term parking spaces.
Okay. Next up, we'll have Evan Yates, A and C Commissioner, Single Member District 4B04.
Good evening, and thank you in particular to Deputy Mayor Babers for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Evan Yates. I'm the Advisory Neighborhood Commissioner for Single Member District 4B04. That's the area that contains the Tacoma Metro Station and this proposed project. This is my third term representing the area surrounding the metro station, and I'm authorized to speak on behalf of Commission 4B by our resolutions of April 2020, June 28, 2021, our letters of May 23rd, 2022, and June 27th, 2022. All of the cited letters and resolutions passed unanimously, and I'll submit them to the record. The commission is in support of the reconfiguration of Womata operations that are considered as part of this project. The commission has worked extensively on this proposal for the previous year and has grounded our support and feedback in at least seven public meetings on this proposal with extensive community participation. These plans are extensively improved over the previous proposal, including three times as much affordable housing and twice as much community-serving park space, in part due to that feedback process. Right now, the Tacoma Metro Station, as currently configured and maintained by Metro, is not a community-serving space. The inability of Metro to adequately maintain the lighting and grounds, the lack of community-serving features in the open space, and the inability of local groups, including the commission, to permit the space for functions means even the most attractive portions of the space remain a hole in the middle of the downtown of our community. The proposed plans, thanks in part to the feedback of the commission, much more strongly connect our community and offer usable recreation and park space that will permanently open the community and a retail plaza that will better connect the two spines of our local business district. The surface parking lot adjacent to Metro is both an eyesore and environmentally unfriendly. Maintaining an oversized impervious surface directly adjacent to transit separates our neighborhoods from their transit services, creates problems with runoff, and encourages additional traffic on our local streets, furthering local pollution and a global climate crisis. The current lot is underpriced and is still underutilized. The commission has found that private parking lots near the metro are generally underutilized, and this metro lot is no exception. It is also asking my neighbors to bear the burden of congestion, traffic safety injuries and deaths, and pollution in the service of commuters from other communities, a proposition I wholeheartedly reject. I will also note that while outside the scope of this hearing, the proposed development includes sixty-seven public parking spaces that people will be able to pay to use. I'm also, as 4B represents part of the Fort Totten community, deeply disappointed by the characterizations of the Fort Totten Metro Station, which is an asset to our community and our commission area. The reconfigured bus loop will better serve transit users, uh, including permanently, uh, ensconcing the existing alighting behavior that we see in riders today. The improved bike storage station will replace in unsightly and inefficient bike storage boxes and fulfill a metro plan that was first presented to our community in 2020. The shared-use pathway will improve access to the station for bicyclists and pedestrians. The reconfiguration at the intersection of the bus loop and Carroll Streets Northwest will improve the pedestrian experience and narrow the roadway to slow vehicle speeds and remove the unsight, uh, the, uh, impermanent, intended to be temporary flex post solutions for safety at that intersection. Finally, Advisory Neighborhood Commission 4B is supportive of efforts to bring new housing to transit-accessible areas, including adjacent to the Tacoma Metro Station. We recognize it's outside the scope of this hearing, but we've supported numerous efforts with a particular emphasis on affordable housing. We previously provided feedback on the land use of this area through the drafting process of the updated comprehensive plan of the District of Columbia and stated that we generally support increased density around Tacoma Metro Station and other high-quality transit corridors, in part because individuals of all income levels should have access to robust public transit options. The District of Columbia government, through the mayor's order, has set a goal of thirty-six thousand new housing units by 2025, of which twelve thousand are to be affordable to households earning below eighty percent of area median income. The Rock Creek East planning area, of which this site resides, has a goal of fifteen-hundred new affordable housing units and has only produced about fifty-eight percent of that goal so far. The approximately seventy affordable units as part of this development are beyond what is required by the district's inclusionary zoning program and would meet more than eleven percent of that remaining goal. These proposed units also include rare, deeply affordable family-sized, three-bedroom, uh, accessible to people earning less than thirty percent of median family income. We have proposed design changes that will reduce the number of units in a project so that our community can meet these goals and are working with the developer to participate in a tax-abatement program that could allow the doubling of the number of affordable units in this develop and continue our work to allow housing for all in this community. I urge the Board of Directors to improve the reconfiguration of the Tacoma Metro Station and defer to the judgment of the elected body and residents most impacted by the decision, those of Advisory Neighborhood Commission 4B.
Okay. Our next speaker is Ilana Prus.
Hi. My name is Ilana Prus, and I'm a resident of Tacoma Park. I've lived in Tacoma Park for twenty-four years in three different places. I support the changes to the Tacoma Park Metro, the proposed changes. I believe it will knit our neighborhoods of Tacoma DC and Tacoma Park, Maryland back together. It will make the safe, the space safer for people walking and biking to the station. It will allow us to build more housing, new housing and affordable housing to support our community and our local small businesses, and it will create the opportunity to have the Civic Plaza and the park that people have spoken about. I believe that this new configuration will also help protect our neighbors from the bus fumes, the bus bays, and the noise by putting them between the building and the metro station. The new development proposes short-term parking, um, with, next to its retail space, and will be open for short-term metro users, which I think is great. Um, and this brings us also in line with other metro stations like Cleveland Park or other areas that are surrounded by apartment buildings and have housing behind that so that we are more of an urban, uh, metro stop with a way to support all of our businesses and the people in the neighborhood. I believe this gives us an opportunity to really build one strong Tacoma, and I support these changes. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Cheryl Court. I'm with a nonprofit called Coalition for Smarter Growth. We're the leading nonprofit in the DC region, including suburban Maryland, dedicated to making the case for smart growth. Our mission is to promote walkable, inclusive, and transit-oriented communities and the land use and transportation policies investments needed to make those communities flourish. We're excited to be testifying in support of the proposed changes to the transit facilities at the Tacoma Metro Station. I've, um, I've been working on reconfiguring the, the metro station and adding housing and complementary uses since 2000, so I'm excited to, um, to be here again today to talk about it. After reviewing, um, a number of plans over a long period, um, I'm happy to say that, uh, we, um, you know, on the one hand, we missed the opportunity over twenty years to build, um, housing opportunities at this metro station and build a better metro station. But today, I'm, I think that these are really fantastic plans and, um, and can, um, create a much more dynamic, um, metro station and safer and more comfortable space. Um, in terms of the changes, I think the ten busways, which is adding a new bus bay, um, re, the reconfigure, reconfig, reconfiguration along the, um, train embankment, um, with, uh, with the, the bus loop, um, connecting still from Eastern and Carroll makes a lot of sense, and, um, uh, bus space will now face an apartment building and also be connected to a Civic Plaza and retail, which will create more comfort, um, and sense of safety for, um, bus riders who are waiting for a metro station. Um, we, uh, we support the, um, the reconfiguration overall of the site in order to accommodate a significant amount of affordable housing, housing and affordable housing, which will add riders and more opportunities for low-income riders to live close to metro and a bus hub. The Civic Plaza for the, uh, the ground floor, with ground floor retail is a benefit to transit riders as well, adding the conveniences and, and meeting spaces, um, and a, an enhanced pedestrian environment. Um, the sixteen pickup and drop-off spaces are, um, placed in close proximity to, um, to the metro entrance, which makes, makes sense, and, um, and we support, um, this approach, um, rather than, uh, maintaining, um, the hundred and sixty, um, kiss and ride spaces. Um, we note too that, um, the plan is for sixty-seven retail parking spaces, which, uh, along with, um, adjacent, um, street parking, which might, um, more appropriately serve a number of the, um, the, the parking demand that's now, um, taken up at the, the metro parking lot. And in fact, maybe one model is at the Rhode Island Avenue Metro Station. There's shared parking between, um, residents, retail, and metro parkers, and that might be a model to look at. Um, we appreciate the green space, um, buffers proposed and the one-point-eight acres of open space, and, um, we are excited about enhancing the walk and bike facilities and, um, traffic calming in the area. We, um, hope to see expanded bike parking and, um, and we want to see, um, bike parking inside the fair gates. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Sabrina Eaton, followed by Anthony Camilli.
Hi there. I wanted to thank you all for holding the hearing and coming out here today and, uh, listening to, uh, residents of the area. My name is Sabrina Eaton, and I live across the street from the Tacoma Metro Station at 7019 Eastern Avenue. Uh, I would like to share several concerns I have about the proposed changes to its facilities and how they'll impact neighbors and the surrounding community. It is wrong to describe the parking you're eliminating as kiss and ride. For four dollars and seventy cents, people can use an app to park there from 5:00 AM through 2:00 AM. That's all-day commuter parking, and the lot is often packed. Womata is supposed to be a transit agency, and this plan would deny access to customers who drive to the Tacoma Station. The plan should retain more parking spaces for metro users and ensure handicap parking access to the station elevator for those who need it. I was also shocked there hasn't been a traffic study to analyze the impact of the proposed changes on surrounding streets. The traffic light you want to install at the Carroll Street Northwest entrance to the metro station could have a disastrous effect on the nearby Blair Road, Cedar Street, Fourth Street Northwest intersection, a frequent site of accidents that's rated an F by DC's Transportation Department. It is foolhardy to proceed with that traffic light without analyzing its effect on surrounding streets and factoring traffic from the apartments proposed on the site, as well as all the other apartment buildings that are under construction in that area. Also, your environmental study falsely claims that there's no flooding issues currently in the area. Runoff from your current bus ingress and egress creates a waterfall on my property during heavy downfalls. Floodwaters from Womata's property knocked over retaining wall on my property in 2021 that cost thousands of dollars to replace. Please use the metro station reconfiguration to correct those problems and stop claiming they don't exist.
intervening land use policy decisions in both DC and Maryland in the form of historic districts that surround the parking lot have prevented significant redevelopment of many large plots of land. The science is clear. Transit policy is climate policy. Um, excuse me. The underutilized surface parking lot at the Tacoma Metro Station has been a long-term mistake. While previous metro leadership can be forgiven for building a parking lot during an era when very little was known about climate change, there is now ample research proving that the best environmental use of land around, around public transit is for housing and/or mixed-use construction, not an impervious parking lot that encourages more driving. I want to note here, uh, as well as others have noted, that, um, the public material suggests that the kiss and ride parking lot is decreasing from a hundred and sixty to sixteen spaces. Um, but that number appears to be misleading based ...........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
724384, pass code 624154. I will make this announcement again before the end of our ...................................................
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jim Sebastian. I live on Baltimore Avenue in Tacoma Park, Maryland. Lot of good points have been made already, not a lot new to say, but I just want to say I do support the proposed changes as well as the development, the new housing, the affordable housing, the open space, as well as the new retail. On the issue of parking, I agree with earlier speakers, it's not an issue of kiss-and-ride, it's really more pickup and drop-off. I think the new plan provides adequate pickup and drop-off space to the extent people need to park for longer, there will be the 67 spaces in the development. It's my understanding, I've lived here about 30 years, but it's my understanding it was critical that in the development of the parking and the continued maintenance of the parking, we did not want to have all-day commuter parking at the Tacoma Station. Whether you agree with that or not, that was kind of a tenet for many years, and I think that still makes some sense. I did want to get more detail on the bike parking. I think we need to maintain the parking we have, make it more secure, closer to the entrance, possibly even bring the bike parking on the other side of the metro entrance gate. Make sure that the Capital Bike Share Station is at least maintained its current size or perhaps increased, also located near the station, and then of course make sure the bicycle and pedestrian access getting to the front of the station is good. In terms of the signal at Carroll, I think that is probably mainly a pedestrian safety issue where people are trying to get to the station now, and if it's installed, it can be synchronized with the other two signals. If not, maybe there's another type of crossing that could be considered, but that's all I got for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Hernandez, followed by Sarah Green.
Hi, thank you for holding this session. My name is Michael Hernandez. I am here in my own personal capacity as a resident of Tacoma Park. Like many people in Tacoma Park, I use metro to commute into the district during the weekdays and on the weekends. That has, of course, took a little bit of a dip in 2020, but has returned to almost pre-pandemic norms for me. And like many residents in Tacoma Park, I rely upon the MoveOn bus system to get to metro when I don't have access to parking, as was the case prior to the pandemic. That resulted in major impediments for me to use the metro because I would frequently be left getting to metro late because MoveOn is unreliable. Now, while I agree with many of the points made by prior speakers here, I do have to raise concerns about the near total elimination of longer-term parking in the new facility. And I would just, I prepared five questions for metro, but since during this public hearing, we're not going to be taking questions, I will just pose them as statements. And that is, first, why take a maximalist position on the parking at the metro? 16 short-term spots replacing 160 longer-term parking spots? Doesn't make a lot of sense to me. It seems like we could have some kind of negotiated middle ground rather than just nixing nearly all of it. The next point. I know that in the conversations with Stephen prior to this meeting, you are working on improving bus service, and I would simply strongly recommend to the board that they commit to ensuring that if this plan goes forward, the bus service, particularly MoveOn, be improved. Now, we did talk a little bit about how metro is going to encourage people to use the Fort Totten Station for longer-term parking, and I'm just wondering what kind of environmental assessment has been done for that new plan? What would the environmental impacts be of people who would normally travel a mile, a mile and a half via car instead traveling maybe double the distance to get to Fort And the last point, how is metro determined that this new housing will significantly add to ridership? Most people have not returned to the office full-time. That's simply a fact that's borne out by the numbers that Stephen put forward here. Pre-pandemic levels of 5,000 to 6,000 riders now being at 2,500. What data does metro have to ensure or to assess that the people who will be moving into this new housing will be more likely to use metro? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Sarah Green, followed by Cliff Schwartz.
Hello, my name is Sarah Green, and I've lived at 7106 Piney Branch Road for 47 years. I was in the room, the first public hearing we had, at a church, I guess it was Promised Land Baptist Church, I think. Anyway, the first public hearing, that was like in 1998. So we've been here a long time, we've been doing this a long time, and one of the things that has always bothered me about the way metro is dealing with this. We went to many public hearings and we spoke at several metro board meetings, and what is happening is you've divided the process between what the development is going to look like and what the public, what the metro service is going to be like. And I think that's a very poor way of looking at this. We should be looking at the entire proposal as a package. You're putting development there, you're changing mass transit space, it's supposed to work, and I think it's a very poor process, so I want to comment on that. The other thing I want to comment on is there has been no traffic study. My neighbor Sabrina Eaton just mentioned that there's no traffic study. I didn't realize that. I assumed there would be some kind of traffic study. Again, bad public policy. Last thing I want to say is that I heard another speaker talk about this as an urban metro stop. We're not an urban metro stop. I'm sorry. I mean, this is not Cleveland Park, it is not Dupont Circle. We are a suburban area, we are a historic district, we have always been proud of that. I guess people disagree with that, but that's just not the way, the characterization of our community. I talk to people all the time who say, "Oh, Tacoma, oh, it's the historic, it's the low-scale." This is not, to describe us as an urban district and to ask for changes reflective of that as an urban district, I believe, is not accurate. But again, people will disagree. Anyway, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I value the metro station, I value the community, and I'd like to see something that's well-designed and in the public interest. Thanks again.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Next up, Cliff Schwartz, followed by Christine Simpson.
Good evening. My name is Cliff Schwartz, and I'm an 18-year homeowner in Tacoma Park. These are my five points. Number one, I agree with the points made by Councilmember Small. Number two, regarding parking going from 160 to only 16 two-hour spots, this will not encourage people who already live in Tacoma and Tacoma Park to use mass transit if they can't park for more than a reasonable duration. Three, a two-hour time limit makes little sense. What is the rationale for a two-hour max limit if a rider will be using the metro to go into DC or Bethesda, for example? Number four, this will hurt or adversely affect senior citizens and people with disabilities who do not want to go all the way to Fort Totten and deal with that parking lot for all of the issues already mentioned. And five, in summary, this will encourage many more people to drive cars in the face of our dire need to reduce our carbon footprint and reduce global warming. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Christine Simpson.
Good evening. My name is Christine Simpson. I live on Cedar Avenue in Tacoma Park, Maryland, about two blocks from the Tacoma Metro Station. I want to share some of my concerns with your proposed changes. WAMADA proposes to remove 144 of what they call the kiss-and-ride spaces. First, I believe there's a terminology problem here. Most of us users of the lot understand that kiss-and-ride spaces mean spaces for picking up and dropping off riders. We users of the lot also know that there are about 150-metered spaces, which neighbors use sometimes if they must drive to the metro and then park while taking the train into town for a movie or play or whatever. Sometimes my husband and I will park there, for example, to go to a baseball game, or we might park there if we're going out to dinner and the weather's bad, or we're worried about crime as we might walk home at night. Others might drive to the station because it's too far to walk or they're not well enough to walk. I think it's a terrible idea to eliminate these metered spaces. People will simply drive to their destinations, as the previous speaker said, which is the opposite of what we should all be doing and the opposite of what WAMADA should be encouraging. The plans also call for the addition of only one bus bay for a total of 10, and it would only be a bus bay for getting off, for a lighting. At one point in the past, a Tacoma transportation study had suggested that an additional three bus bays for a total of 12 would be necessary for the station. Is WAMADA allowing enough space for future bus growth? WAMADA proposes to have buses and private vehicles enter the station at what is now the bus's only entrance on Carroll and also on Eastern. At one time, the Tacoma Central District Plan considered the combining of bus and car traffic at the Tacoma Metro Site to be inherently dangerous. Has something changed? While I know this hearing is focused on WAMADA's, is focused on transit changes at the station, I hope I've addressed some. WAMADA's environmental evaluation, which is the document that accompanies the public notice of this hearing, contains and also admits some statements that do concern the future development at the site. I think they should be pointed out. On page 13, the WAMADA document states that the building design, location, and orientation address neighbor concerns about its compatibility with the neighborhood. I disagree, and I believe that I and many other Tacoma Park, Maryland neighbors continue to have serious concerns about the compatibility of the proposed structure with the existing neighborhood. I also want to point out that on page 21 of this environmental evaluation, WAMADA states that the current zoning of the site is MU4, mixed-use 4. However, it fails to mention that on November 28th, WAMADA and the developer jointly filed an application to change the zoning at the site to MU5A, which would allow for a significantly greater height. I don't understand why this was not mentioned. In sum, we, the taxpayers, helped to fund the original development of the Tacoma Metro Station. We continue to support it with our tax dollars and metro fares. We expect you, WAMADA, as public stewards, to protect these precious facilities for public transit so that we, the public, can access them now and in the future. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. And before I move on to the next speaker, I just wanted to repeat the announcement again. For those of you who have called in on our public input phone lines, unfortunately, we're having those technical difficulties I mentioned, so if you can, please call in to 301-715-8592. The meeting ID is 84108724384 and pass code 624154. Again, if you're on public input and would like to provide testimony, please follow the instructions that are on the slide that you can see. Thank you. Our next speaker is Barbara Rosen, followed by Peter Faden.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Rosenblatt. I moved to Tacoma Park about 18 years ago, partly because I value and use public transportation. I use the Tacoma parking lot as a safe and user-friendly place to leave my car for the five-minute drive home. Fort Totten parking is not a safe nearby alternative, especially for older residents such as myself. It is large and isolated, and at night, I believe that expecting senior citizens to use Fort Totten parking discriminates against us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosen. Next speaker is Peter Faden, followed by Diana Cohn.
Good evening. I'm Peter Faden. I live at 7025 Eastern Avenue, which is across the street from the Tacoma Metro Station. I'm going to limit myself mostly to the report itself because I find it very limited and inaccurate. The description of the current parking at the Tacoma Metro Station is highly inaccurate. Some specific points of error in the document. The document refers, as has been noted by others, to 144 kiss-and-ride spaces, and up here I notice that the number is 160. This is also prominently noted on the flyers posted in the parking lot announcing this public hearing. In fact, these spaces are for hourly and daily parking and have been for some time. The signage throughout the lot is clear on this fact. This misrepresentation prevents the public from understanding the fundamental change that WAMADA envisions, which is eliminating entirely hourly and daily parking and dedicated handicap parking at the Tacoma Metro Station altogether. At other points in the document, the description is fully confusing. Page seven refers to, quote, "160 kiss-and-ride spaces, which are comprised of 151 metered spaces." It's not clear to me how you pay quarter to stop and kiss and leave. It clearly does have park-and-ride spaces. Page nine says it doesn't, and these can be used up for 21 hours. Page 20 incorrectly states that the proposed kiss-and-ride spaces will be closer to the metro entrance, which is not true. The current kiss-and-ride is closer to the platform via the elevator. The document incorrectly notes that the metering system only accepts quarters and $1 coins. In fact, it accepts credit cards. It's a modern system put in two or three years ago that people are familiar with by now, has nothing to do with the old meters that were still there, but presumably that's what's being described here. Small point, the 7-Eleven across the street has been gone for three years. Small point, the 7-Eleven across the street has been gone for three years. This inaccuracy extends to the description of the station on the WAMADA website, which refers to it as having 58 metered spaces but no daily parking. So my suggestion is that WAMADA go back to the drawing board and better describe this. This is an important point because the posters themselves referred to the change being contemplated as removal of 144 kiss-and-ride spaces. And if I didn't know better and I were a parker, I would assume that this has absolutely nothing to do with me. So it's taken some education for our community in Tacoma Park, in Tacoma, DC, to even understand what's being contemplated here. And if I hadn't, by curiosity, crossed the street and read the poster with the print this big, I would have never known how totally inaccurate the description was. One final point, to tell people to go down to Fort Totten is to just add to the traffic, the congestion, and the pollution. And I don't think too many people would want to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Faden. Our next speaker is Diana Cohn. And then we will move to our Zoom callers, and if I could ask, please mute if you haven't already done so, if you're participating via Zoom. Thank you.
I'm Diana Cohn, president of Historic Tacoma, which represents both Tacoma, Maryland, Tacoma Park, Maryland, and Tacoma, DC. And I'm seconding some of what you just heard from Peter and others ahead of him. This site sits both in, right on the border of Maryland and DC, and it has ramifications for people on both sides, and so I would like to make sure that WAMADA considers both residents on both sides as stakeholders. The second point I'd like to make is that the traffic study is mentioned as a future event, a future project for WAMADA. And the situation presented by, in particular, the new traffic light at the underpass strikes me as creating a whole set of bottlenecks that need to be carefully looked at. Consider that you will have buses coming in and out right under the underpass at Carroll. You will have the kiss-and-ride cars coming out. You have through-traffic constantly going past the station, pedestrians, and then about 300 yards away, you have another traffic light at Carroll and Cedar. And that creates, has the real potential to create major congestion on the boundaries of this site and would make the flow of traffic virtually impossible. And if WAMADA wants to find a, create a feasible plan for, that will be supported by the entire community, both sides, including the drivers driving through the intersections, the residents, the new residents in whatever, all the new developments around, these things need to be carefully considered going forward. And that will allow for a balance between density and congestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cohn. Now we'll move to our callers participating via Zoom. I will call out the last four digits of your phone number when it's your turn. So first up, we'll have 0724. Please introduce yourself at the beginning of your remarks. Thank you.
I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Anita Morrison, and I'm an urban economist with an office one block from the Tacoma Metro Station. I support the proposed changes to the metro station parking and bus bays because it allows for the creation of badly-needed, affordable, and market-rate house placemaking improvements and an upgrade in the facilities for pedestrians and bikes. So my practice includes a focus on affordable housing. So I understand just how badly the Tacoma community needs affordable housing units, particularly family-sized units with three bedrooms. These larger units are hard to find even at market rent, so they will be particularly valuable in addressing a serious need. Their location at the Tacoma Station will provide easy transportation to jobs as compared with other locations not well-served by transit. Access to good jobs is often a difficult barrier for workers trying to improve their economic status. The Civic Plaza with retail spaces adjacent to the metro station will help enlighten the area and better integrate it into the Tacoma community. Having watched how little use the current green space has gotten over the past decade, I expect the newly configured space with public art will be a big improvement. I recognize that the development requires a reduction in the number of public parking spaces, but I believe that's a beneficial trade-off. Coupled with better bike access and sidewalks, the parking restrictions will encourage more people to access the Metro via bus, bike, and foot. And so, overall, the enhanced public realm with quality mixed-income housing development will provide a long-term benefit to the Tacoma community, one that is long overdue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Our next caller, number ending in 3394. Please introduce yourself.
Hello, this is a student at a school near Tacoma Metro Station, DCI, and we support the changes to the Tacoma Metro Station. We would like somebody, we think that the changes will make the area safer and more comfortable for the children that go to DCI. It also will help there maybe be more, like 54, 52, and 90, and 59. These students are always really packed, and it's hard to get space. If the number of students are not recognized or counted, those students don't score cards because they don't care.
They're concerned.
We would like that those changes don't affect the students because the buses are already really crowded.
We would like that the amount of students be considered consideration while making these changes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't believe we have any other Zoom callers left, and there's no one else signed up to speak, but I'll ask, is there anyone present in the room who wishes to provide testimony at this time? Great, we'll have one speaker. If you could just introduce yourself at the beginning of your remarks, that'd be great.
Yes, my name is Robert Lanz. I live on Cedar Avenue in Tacoma Park, about two blocks from here. My question has to do with the scope of this hearing. You'd mentioned previously that the size and configuration of the building is outside of the scope of this hearing, and other commenters have commented that Metro should be analyzing the entire scope of the project, not just buses. A lot of people came here not to figure out how you're going to move buses from one place to another, but how this building is going to work, and you haven't explained that or accepted public comments on it. I think that is irresponsible, and you should be analyzing the entire project from start to finish in one hearing for all to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak who hasn't had a chance to do so? Great, please come forward. If you've already spoken, no, ma'am, if you've already spoken, you have your three-minute limit. Thank you, though. I saw two hands raised, so if somebody wants to come forward. I've got two in the room, so we'll go with them first.
Hi, I wasn't planning to speak. My name is John Crizell. This is my first time attending one of these meetings. I'm a resident of Tacoma Park, and I was pleasantly surprised to see so many folks who are here to support the project. I have a two-year-old son, and I would love for him to grow up in a world where parking wasn't the biggest concern for a lot of folks. Many, many commentators have mentioned the climate crisis. There's also a housing crisis and a homelessness crisis that we face in this city, and study after study has shown that increasing the amount of housing, not just affordable but all housing, is the best way to deal with the homelessness crisis that is present in DC and Montgomery County. One of the speakers said that they were here at the first, one of the first meetings about this project in 1998, and to me, that is really telling, that this has been going on for 25 years, and yet we still have a parking lot there, you know, impervious space. I really hope that those who are here opposing the project, and I'm sure that they are, are bringing their concerns here in good faith and not in just an effort to delay and delay the project as has been happening for a very, very long time. So I urge Metro to, you know, take these comments into consideration, but to try to move forward where possible because I know many of my neighbors agree that the development would be a really great thing for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw one other hand raised in the back. If you want to come down to the front and join us.
Thank you so much. My name is Saleem Firth. I live in Tacoma Park. I'm sorry that I'm late. I've got little kids and bedtime came first, but we got that out of the way. So glad to be here. I'm really glad that WAMADA is looking at this project. I think it's an excellent improvement to our community. And as an economist, I want to just say one thing about sort of zooming out and looking at the big picture for transit. One of my big concerns as we move into a Zoom world, we've got half of the folks here on Zoom, is that transit systems will have a hard time paying to maintain the level of service that we've been accustomed to over the last 30, 50 years. And adding more housing directly adjacent to transit stations is an excellent way to sort of push against that headwind, be able to maintain the ridership capacity and keep the service we're used to. We can't just assume that Metro will be able to run as many trains with as many conductors at as many hours as, you know, kind of what we grew up with and be able to have more riders in that pool. Some of them will be working from home, but some of them will be taking Metro and helping to keep that service for all of us because for transit, congestion works backwards. The more people use it, the better the service gets. So thank you so much, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak who hasn't had a chance? Anybody else on Zoom? So since there's no one else, we'll go ahead and start wrapping up this hearing. As a reminder, we will be accepting written testimony until 5:00 PM on Friday, January 27, 2023. Testimony can be submitted online at WMATA.com/plansandprojects, all one word. Testimony can also be sent via US mail to Office of the Secretary, WAMADA, W-M-A-T-A, SECT, S-E-C-T, 2E, PO Box 44390, Washington, DC, 20026-4390. All mailed testimony must be received, not postmarked, by 5:00 PM on Friday, January 27. As a reminder, a video recording of this hearing will be posted on YouTube at youtube.com/metroforward if you would like to view it to help with developing written testimony, which again must be received by Metro by 5:00 PM, January 27. Thank you again for participating in this hearing. Have a great evening. Thank you.